...meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors order for October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, roll call Mr. Veder.
Layla.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Having a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried, public comments, unseen by from the public today, claims and payments, Susan, county payments.
Yes, the county's expenditures this week total two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and ten cents, two-six-seven, three-seven-four-point-one-zero.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layla.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted.
Approve of expenditures for Country View Care Facility?
The expenditures that will be paid this week for Country View total four hundred and sixteen thousand, fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents, four-one-six, zero-five-eight-point-four-one. We're able to pay the July bills to the county of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. We're going to hold August and September, which total about six hundred and eleven thousand. As of this morning, we have just a little over one million in their bank account. Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the item? This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted.
Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning.
Morning Kathy.
Good morning Board. Kathy Nekliz, county engineer. Brief update on the roads, the gravel roads are in pretty good condition. There are just a few that are closed due to, due to the remaining water over the roads. There's a complete list on our website. We think that we should have that all cleaned up today. There is work going on, the bridge crew is working on Gresham Road, replacing a small structure there, and that is between Crane Creek and Pilot Grove Road. Our mechanics are putting the plow frames on all of the trucks this week and part of next week. So the frames will be on the front of the trucks, the spreaders are now going into the back of the dump truck, and then it just takes like ten minutes for the operator to attach the front plow to the frame. The wings will not go on to the trucks or the mortar graders until about a month from now. We have been keeping an eye on the Washburn area as far as the water in that, in the roads there, at the intersection of First and Second Street, there, there is some water over the road. We believe that will be going down over the week if we don't get any further rain. Right now, we don't feel like we need to be doing anything with that water. It's not really impacting the traffic. If we were to pump it, it would requiring running a hose, probably five hundred feet over Washburn Road, then we would have to put up barricades over those, the hose, and probably have to slow the, the traffic down. So at this time, we are not inclined to be doing anything out there. We are keeping an eye on it and monitoring the situation. But there's water everywhere, as you all know, and, yeah, so can I answer any questions at this time?
Do you have the roads open on Second there, Second Street?
Yes, it is not closed. The road is open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for October ninth.
Remove. Second.
Moved in second, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried, consent agenda by resolution?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on any of the items? This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a motion that the recorder has reported fees collected from Sandy L. Smith County Recorder for the period of August first to August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen be received and placed on file with the county auditor.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried, contracts and agreement, this resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Hawkeye Alarm and Signal Company, Waterloo, for the purchase and installation of five IP cameras for the first floor of the courthouse with a bid of three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars be approved as recommended by Rory Gevey, Maintenance Superintendent.
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Gevey, anything like you'd like to add to this?
Are these replacements or new areas?
Good morning Board, Rory Gevey, Maintenance Superintendent. These, one of these cameras is actually a replacement. The other four, three are going into the Treasures Department with the focus of getting a view of the counter where the transactions are taking place. The fourth one is going over by the Clerk of Courts on first floor, capturing that counter where those transactions are taking place. That particular camera, we've, we've had an issue in the past with counterfeit money coming through, and so that's kind of what prompted us to put a camera, particularly in the Clerk of Courts area. That camera was originally identified to go up on third floor, just to have a little better view of the lobby area outside of the large courtroom, and we decided that it was a better fit to focus on our counters where transactions are taking place, this go around, and then in the future, we can look at upgrading our lobby cameras on the other floors other than first floor.
Was this a request from the state?
No, this was actually a discussion that I had with the Sheriff's Department. We knew we had five cameras budgeted for this year. We started looking at locations, and they really felt that rather than third floor, keep in mind, we already have a camera up on third, it's an analog camera, the picture's not too terribly bad, we are able to record that, so there is footage up there, or monitoring going on up on third, but they just felt that this was a better fit for that camera to get those countertops where the transactions are happening. So we went out, we received two bids for this, we wanted a system that was capable of tying into our exact vision that we currently have, our IP camera system that we currently have, so Hawkeye was the lower bid of those two. We did have four thousand dollars budgeted for this project, and this is labor to install those cameras as well. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you Rory. I have a motion and a second on the floor, this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution, that's a summary plan description received from Dental, Delta Dental for the process of dependent children aging off of their parents' insurance on their actual birthday instead of at the end of their birthday month be approved as recommended by Debbie Bunker, HR Director.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions on this for Debbie?
Yes, it was the advantage of doing it on the birthday rather than at the end of the month where the birthday occurs.
This change is actually just being requested for consistency sake with our health insurance. It's not in the SPD, and so we, we age them off at then, and we actually just became aware of this recently, that there was a discrepancy between the two SPDs, so this is just, that this would be the only category where somebody would be on past their actual eligibility date, so this would just be, is consistency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, with no further discussion, this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layla.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted, number nine out of this, is this resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, IT Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same, to purchase switches for thirty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and fifty-six cents to be used at the courthouse in Pinecrest.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Veder?
Yeah, some of these switches are part of my budget, and some of them are part of the Marco project, and, well, worry me when.
As Kim had mentioned, with the Marco, which is our IP phone upgrade system, what, what we discovered as the company came through, started doing a thorough survey of our existing infrastructure with regards to switches, that there are a number of them that are not power over ethernet, POE switches. Kim had already had in her budget to get some of these switches replaced with the idea of eventually getting them all replaced. What this does for us, for the phone system, putting these switches in, is it really minimizes the amount of wiring that would have to take place. It essentially would take the old switch and turn it into a power over ethernet. How that works, basically, you've got two ways of doing it with our facilities, since we're state and county. Obviously, the county is not on our network, so Marco had already, in their bid, provided what's called a streamlined switch, which would enable any state office or any other entity that's not on our network to be able to still be tied into our IP phone system. And then any county agency that's under our network would need to have a POE, power over ethernet, to allow that system to be tied into our network, and so essentially that's what this is doing. So when Marco came in, they trued up our system, they did a complete count, they found several extensions that were actually modem extensions, which we don't use anymore, and they also found several extensions that were just no longer, phone extensions that were no longer used. And so what that did is it resulted in about a twenty-three thousand, almost a twenty-four thousand dollar reduction in, in their, their original bid. And so we had asked Marco to provide us a cost for these POE switches, and they came in quite high compared to what Kim can buy them for. Kim has her resources that she works with, and so I had contacted Marco, and they're perfectly fine with us purchasing those switches ourselves outside of that contract, so that's how we got to today.
So anticipated cost savings by buying them, buying these switches together?
Having Kim purchase these switches versus us going through Marco is about a ten thousand dollar savings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gevey.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did you want to say anything more, Kim?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
This is, I have a motion and a second on the floor, with no further discussion, this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This resolution at Blackhawk County, collect a total of two thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars from Scott Dugan, forty-four percent of the six thousand fifty dollars that Blackhawk County paid for his law enforcement academy training per the appointment agreement.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is just a, this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible board action, the utilization of red line employee hotline service.
So this will just be discussion today. I talked to Pete, and he would recommend if we do go down this path, that we would send out a bid for this, but after the embezzlement scandal broke at the Soil and Water Commission, it got me kind of thinking about ways of protecting the county from, from something like that happening to us ever again. I think that that case was just under half a million dollars over the course of nine or eleven years, and so a service like this could have the potential of saving taxpayers a lot of money down the road. I was not too sure where to look, and so I, I asked ISAC for recommendations, they weren't aware of anybody in the county or in the state using an employee hotline service like this, but they did a little bit of research and found this one that, that some auditing firm that they work with utilizes, and they recommended, and I reached out to them. I guess this, this service is used by the state of Kentucky, Citrus County, Florida, and Davidson County, and I reached out to each of those for a recommendation, and or just ask them how they're, they feel about it, I haven't heard back yet from either of them. But, but essentially what it is, it is a combination of a twenty-four-seven employee hotline that only our employees would have access to. They can also, there's a web portal that they can also submit their concerns with, and it's not only, it's for a combination of reporting things like financial fraud that they might be witnessing, other workplace concerns, or their safety concerns, that they might not feel uncomfortable going to publicly, or they want to be anonymous in these situations, but also an area for, for employees offering suggestions about ways of improving procedures or workplace conditions. And so it's, and I think, believe the cost from this particular company would be eighteen hundred dollars for, for a year, and would cover all, all current county employees. They did provide this video that does a good job of kind of walking us through how the reporting system works, everything that they cover, and if there are any other questions yet, I'd be happy to play this.
I guess just a comment is that, for, for our Blackhawk County taxpayers, is that Blackhawk County has an annual audit, and some, some of these governmental entities do not necessarily have an annual audit.
Yep.
And I, I think we need to work with our current auto, our company, that when they do the audit, they have suggestions, we should look at what those suggestions are. And I think we need to redocument what services we have for individuals that work for the county to give their feedback on situations and look at that, and have that information, and then look at, evaluate what we could do internally rather than outsourcing this.
Mr. Gevey and I have been talking for several months about putting a suggestion box in downstairs in, either by the cafeteria or by HR, so people, employees with suggestions could put stuff in there. I'm sure people from the outside might put stuff in there, but that's beside the point. At least we'd be getting input with what's going on in the, inside that we're not aware of, or what, what ideas an employee might have to help improve this, the whatever here at the courthouse. That's, that was my thought, so I'm, I'm kind of feeling that, you know, like you said, Mr. Maxman, we got a lot of stuff in place already with what, what we've got, so a little tweaking is probably all we'd need.
The key to success in any of this regardless, route you go, is you have to have a process set up to analyze these and answer them, otherwise it does no good.
Right.
And if you happen to get a safety one in there, and you didn't act in a timely fashion, there could be some problems there. Also, another problem I could see with an outside firm, is a lot of our bargaining units have a mechanism within their contracts, and I am not so sure if the leadership would like something like this, because that would be an end around from them, so there's a lot of things we got to look at, and then the time, who's going to take care of these calls or suggestions, and how, you know, what personnel, HR, do they have the people to do it and so forth, so. I think the key is what Frank said with the auditor, we do get audited every year, and it doesn't hurt to look outside the box on some of this stuff, but.
I mean, I think that we've got too small of an HR department as is, and I would see this as being something that would assist them, and this doesn't replace, this wouldn't be a report made through the system, wouldn't be any sort of grounds for, for punishment or, or action of that resort, but it would, could potentially stimulate the need for a, for a further investigation that would follow our, our already existing procedures, but it's just a way of flagging an issue that, that might not be rising to the top, somebody might not feel comfortable going to their supervisor, or they might not feel even comfortable going to HR. And you'll see in the video, you get to decide, when you submit something, you kind of, there's default mechanisms based on the nature of the complaint that decide who it gets routed to, and then, but you have the option to block someone from that if they, if they happen to be the subject of, of what the issue is. But I think that if you want to indulge, I think we could play this, but, but I do think that this kind of thing offers some, some services that, that we don't, that we don't currently have covered.
Chris, I would like to say, I do think we open, have a very open and transparent working environment here. To add to that, I'm glad to know that it was because the Iowa Soil and Conservation, Oil and Water Conservation Group that brought this to your attention, and nothing that internally happened. I think we as supervisors are responsible really for implementing the safeguards, and it's maybe an opportunity to look at what our processes are, and maybe bring that up for discussion, because I do think we have a lot of good things in place. I think we probably should be commended that our auditors haven't recognized anything like that, and if they had, we would have taken action on it, obviously too, but I do think we have a lot of internal as well as external supports, and, but certainly, like I said, willing to take a look at more of, more information.
We'd all, we'd almost have to really consult with our fellow elected officials in their departments, because, you know, they run that area, and, and they want to have input on what they want, so there's a lot of particulars involved with this.
I think even having, like you said, the auditor's office is a safeguard, having the sheriff's office, having some of those different avenues, it's kind of unfortunate. I do think I kind of pride us on that we do have so many places probably in our county that we could, that employees could go, if they don't want to go to HR, they could go to the board, or five different board members, they could go to other departments as well, but certainly, like I said, I don't think there's ever not an opportunity to take a look at it. Thank you.
I, I just see this as another really affordable safeguard that we could be adding, but I'll go ahead and.
Box that Craig mentions too, sometimes suggestions box, I think we've maybe done that in the past, I don't know, not since I've been here.
Several years ago we did, and I don't know why it was ever taken down.
I guess we need to look at access, and we're not just the courthouse, but we have multiple.
I think they were, I think they were all against the supervisors, that's why we could get.
It was.
One particular.
Strictly one, one individual.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, Mr. Maxman.
I don't remember, what, what is his name? Maybe that was a previous.
Yeah, it was.
Anything else on this subject?
I can go ahead and play this, if people have a, it's just, just under five minutes long.
To learn how to file a report and how to follow up on a previously filed report. First, let's learn how to file a report. To file a report, visit www red flag reporting dot com and click on File a Report. In some instances, a different web address will be provided, but the process is the same. Web reporting is mobile responsive. Alternatively, you may call the toll-free number provided to you. Live operators are available twenty-four seven three sixty-five. As you proceed, you will be given the opportunity to choose the level of anonymity that you are most comfortable with. Note that anonymity may not be permitted in some countries. Next, you will be asked to enter your client code, organization name, and location. The client code can be found on the posters, wallet cards, and/or memos distributed at your place of work. A client code must be entered without error. The organization name must also be entered, but the software will accept any name or spelling. Entering the location is optional. In some instances, a drop-down menu will be provided for selecting your organization. In these instances, no client code is required. To proceed, you must acknowledge that Red Flag Reporting cannot be used for reporting emergencies. Contact nine-one-one or the emergency phone number appropriate in your locale in such instances. Now you will receive a message from your organization and be asked to select the type of concern you are reporting. You may select more than one option. Your organization may have different options than those shown here. Based on the type of concern you selected, you can now see to whom your report will be routed. You may block any of these individuals from seeing or accessing your report. In this example, the reporter is concerned because George is the source of the issue. By preventing access, the reporter stopped George from being notified. Furthermore, George will have no access to the report. You will then be guided through a short series of questions designed to capture all information relevant to understanding and addressing your concern. Let's look at just a few of these questions. Here you see that you can upload evidence into your report. This may include scanned documents, photographs, spreadsheets, and the like. As previously noted, and if permitted in your country, you can select the level of anonymity that you are most comfortable with. Depending on the option you select, you may be asked to establish login rights. Also, depending on the option you select, you may choose to receive automated alerts when management updates your report. Finally, you will be asked to submit your report. You must click Submit to File Your Report. Once you do, only appropriate members of management will be notified. Now let's see how to check on a previously filed report. You will visit www red flag reporting dot com and click on Check Report. Alternatively, you may call the toll-free number provided to you. No matter which method you select, you will need to provide your case number and the password you created. After clicking Check Report, you will be asked to choose the link that best reflects your report. This training video is for the organizations that use our premier offering. Your report will begin with RFR. Now, enter your username, which is your case number, and enter your password. Here you can send updates and new documents to management and receive updates and documents from management. Through this brief video, you have learned how to file a report and how to follow up on a previously filed report. Thank you for your time. Red Flag Reporting, dedicated to protecting organizations and their people.
Kim, are you still here?
Yep.
Is it possible to have an electronic suggestion box with, that people could do it anonymously?
It's something I can look into. The anonymous part of it may be an issue, but I can check and see what I can find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything? Anything else on that subject?
No, I'd just say I think it's a, another venue to be looking at in addition to the safeguards we've got, and the price tag's pretty affordable compared to what it could, has the potential of saving the county.
It does, I think a lot of the work tends to be on the investigative side, though, the reporting is the easy parts.
I guess I'd like to get to, at some point, Grant's feedback on this.
Not necessarily.
Any particular questions?
Probably sheriff's office, several others too.
Yeah. I guess whether a system like this is somewhat of a duplication of what we already have.
I don't think it's really a duplication of, of what's in place. If we had a suggestion box, that would be something similar, but some people might feel more, might feel less apprehension about doing it online as opposed to putting something in a suggestion box where there's going to be a camera that shows which, well, that's a fact, that's a fact. What do you think, we bought those five cameras for? And as far as the investigation part of it goes, I would assume that if we thought from a, if, if there was something that was put in that indicated fraud, financial fraud especially, that we would be contacting the state auditor's office, and that would be what we would do in, in any case that we uncovered or suspected something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Beeter.
Grant got me thinking here. I'm only speaking to that misconduct that would otherwise rise to level of criminal. Obviously, this thing provides a lot of different services than that, but the word anonymous in terms of prosecution is kind of a scary word sometimes. It can get us to a certain place, but you know, the old adage is everybody in town can know someone committed a crime, but if they're all anonymous, it doesn't amount, or it's not worth the paper it's written on, so just want to put that out there, that we see it not just in this context, we see it with reports to local law enforcement, people calling anonymously and then wonder, why isn't something being done? You got to have names and witnesses, and have to have their names out there, so I know it's difficult sometimes, but I just kind of want to put that out there when I heard this God works.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I, I think one potential safeguard, I guess, that there is the option to communicate back with a person still anonymously, and so if you needed to compel them to come, come public because the matter was that serious, I think, is at least that opportunity, if I, I definitely get that concern.
Anything else? Any reports or information from the board? I'd just like to send out our condolences, a World War II vet that was on the Honor Flight a couple of years ago, passed away Saturday, Ray Stickford, he would have been ninety-five years old, November eighth, he was looking forward to his ninety-fifth birthday, but unfortunately, good Lord chose to bring him home early, I guess, so he was all fired up for a big party for his ninety-fifth, but you won't get to have that, so with that, and then also along the line of birthdays, I believe yesterday was a big day for someone around here, I'm trying to remember, but Mr. Maxman had another birthday.
Another?
Another one.
And thankful that I did.
Yeah, so are we. Happy birthday, a little late, Frank.
I'll just, okay, I'll just share that tonight, our Crush the Crisis opioid response coalition has our, our second training event. It's kind of long, but it's from five-thirty to nine o'clock, but it's really broken up in the different parts. The first part is registration, just information tables, but then at five forty-five, we'll be showing the movie Heroin, and then that goes till about six-thirty, and at six forty, we'll have an actual loxycam training for folks that want to get trained on the emergency response medications for when somebody's overdosing, and then finally at seven fifteen is when the panel discussion will be. I would just note that our Congressman is coming to do an event tomorrow night in Waterloo on the opioid response, but I think it's more of a PR stunt. He actually contacted our coalition and wanted us to cancel our event that we've been planning for months, so that people would focus on, and his little PR move tomorrow night, and so that's really unfortunate that instead of wanting to support the ongoing efforts that are happening in the community, he'd rather just roll into town and, and use this kind of crisis for publicity.
I'm sorry, what's the location?
Oh, the location tonight, it's in the Peterson Town Hall at the Waterloo Center for the Arts.
Anything else to come before us?
Crush the Crisis.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of I?
Aye.